We'll call our meeting to order for the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission Meeting for May 18th, 2022. We do have a quorum present, and so our first item of business is to approve minutes of the April 20th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those prior to the meeting? Have any questions? Anything that needs to be removed or changes to be made?
No additions or changes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And our consent agenda, again, you had a chance to review this ahead of time, and we did have some revisions to that that were emailed to us, I believe, yesterday, particularly on Item G regarding the Taco Bells. We got some revised elevations, but anything else on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed for any further discussion? Or if not, we'll just take the motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Old business. We have three items here today. Our first item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 78 acres located along Highway 99, south of Clear Ridge Drive. Ferrari Partners LP is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, Commissioners. The annexation that's requested is for a 68.25 acre parcel shown here in blue. Also was part of the study area was approximately 3,600 linear feet of Highway 99 right-of-way. The request is simultaneous with a requested zoning change for the subject property to planned residential district to allow for up to 182 single-family detached houses. This was a public hearing that was held at the Planning Commission on April 6th last month at the request of the Planning Commission of the developer was to hold a neighborhood meeting in order to do some neighborhood outreach, and that meeting was held on May 2nd, 2022. The comments relating to the annexation that we received at the neighborhood meeting were in regards to the urbanization of Rockvale, that the city limits are creeping up towards Rockvale, and then there was some comments made about the urban growth boundary. I want to show, for reference, a map. So this map shows in yellow where the current city limits are. The Ferrari property is with the orange arrow, and then the urban growth boundary limit line is a blue dash line that runs along here. So the property to the urban growth boundary is approximately 3/4 of a mile to the south. Urban growth boundary limit does not cross over Highway 99 to the west. So the purpose of an urban growth boundary is to identify where the urban city limits are intended. It is a fixed line on a map that is adopted, and so with our comprehensive plan, we look and see where growth will occur within the city limits and up to the urban growth boundary. With the current study that we've done, that we've been undergoing with our 2035, we have identified that this property would be the last property to the southwest that we would recommend into the city limits, and that's primarily because of the sewer that has an existing connection at the south, east corner of the property. So as indicated, the staff had completed a plan of services, and from that study, the city can provide services, city services, to the property. There was some strong concerns with the right-of-way being annexed, however, and the primary reasons for that is due to the amount of maintenance, the existing operations, and the lack of sidewalk on the right-of-way. The operations are primarily due to the schools. These are, it is an existing condition. The schools are existing. Traffic related to school operations would remain regardless of this property was developed or not. Staff is recommending to, for this Planning Commission to discuss this item, and we recommend removing the 3,600 linear feet segment of Highway 99 for the following reasons. If annexed, the city would be responsible for the additional road right-of-way, traffic flow improvements on 99, and installing sidewalks on both sides of Highway 99. Also, the annexation of the 3,600 linear feet of 99 right-of-way would not benefit the city and would create a negative impact due to the required improvements. Also, the staff is recommending approval of annexation of the subject property because city services can be provided to the subject property upon annexation and with the development of residential, single-family detached units. In order to do an annexation that is non-contiguous, the city would have to enter into an agreement, an inter-local agreement between the county and the city, and this agreement would be presented to the city council if the Planning Commission supports annexation as recommended. At this point, the Planning Commission, please, if you could, discuss the matter and then formulate your recommendation to the city council. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about the neighborhood meeting or the project itself. And then the applicant and the property owner are also here if you have any questions of them.
Ms. Rush, can you just give us the brief history of why we have and why we're currently looking at a property that could potentially be annexed that is not contiguous with our existing city limits? And in the past, we only looked at properties that were contiguous, and now we have the even opportunity to look at properties that are not contiguous. Correct?
Correct. So in terms of the legal aspect of that, of course, we'll have David respond to that. But in terms of why, anytime we have a proposal for annexation or zoning, we look at it on its face value. Really, the biggest driving factor for this one is the sewer, that they have the ability to connect a sewer, which is always the preferred method of waste disposal in that capacity. And the reason, again, for why it would be non-contiguous, we often do annex in the roadway segment. In this case, because of the sidewalks and the operations and the maintenance of this length of roadway, the city staff is recommending against it.
Chair Jones, I believe it was 2015 that the legislature gave authority for non-contiguous annexations. When it was first passed, it was limited with the population brackets that they do sometimes use. It was limited to only Williamson County, and the following year, they deleted that. And so any municipality within the state can affect a, and can legally affect a non-contiguous annexation. There have been a few. I'm not sure how many. I know that Franklin has done some, and I was advised that Maryville has done one. And Juliet may have, I'm not sure. And there may be others.
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of have that history out there that prior to a certain date, there we wouldn't have even been looking at a non-contiguous.
The terms of that statute require that the city enter into an agreement with the county as to, with regard to any, you know, anything that would impact the county, the county and the city. So we have not reached out to the county attorney yet. My thought was to wait until the action of the Planning Commission. If the Planning Commission should recommend against it, then I won't bother, and if the Planning Commission does recommend in favor of this annexation as a non-contiguous, I will reach out to the county attorney and begin the process of putting together an agreement.
Okay.
So there was either, I may be making this up, but I thought there was some discussion regarding the ability to access Highway 99. Is that going to be brought up now, or was that a mute point? Or am I dreaming that?
No, there was discussion about that, and it's my understanding that the city engineering staff believes that that access would be controlled by TDOT, not by the county, even though that portion of State Route 99 is within the county. But it is a state road, and access to it would be governed by the, by TDOT.
So when, when does TDOT get approached? After it's been annexed? Or it's like the chicken or the egg? Or how does that work?
I would expect they'd be approached, assuming there's a favorable recommendation that they would be approached prior to it going to council.
So that, so that part has not been done yet?
Not to my knowledge. Matt Taylor may have other information.
Matt Taylor from SEC. With TDOT, that application is made actually with the, after the construction plans are approved by staff, and that's how we do it with all of our connections to TDOT right-of-way. They want local municipality to review and approve the plans, and so it's purely a permitting exercise with TDOT. Do you comply with driveway separation? Do you comply with site distance? Do you comply with drainage? And are you paving per our specs? That's all TDOT cares about.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
I'll just make some quick comments about this. It's, you know, we've got a lot of feedback a couple of different times, and it's all good feedback. Frankly, it's been kind of nice. There's not been a whole lot of nastiness, as far as I can tell. It's just been good feedback, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I think it's interesting to me, just that this piece of business and the next piece of business that's coming before us is very interesting, that the, kind of the irony of it, but, you know, when we think about, you know, what are we going to do? Are we annexing? And how are we planning? And that sort of thing, you know, we can point to this one and say, well, it's in the boundary. It's 35% less than the 3.8 sewer allocation that we know needs to be hit in order to not overextend our utilities. Between the state and the city, we've spent millions and millions of dollars not only running the sewer to this spot, but also widening 99 to take care of the traffic issues. We have the traffic issue of the school. We have a possible solution for that, but it's out of our control. That's not something we created or nothing that I feel frankly responsible for. But, you know, we have spent millions of dollars for the sewer to get it there. It's well under the sewer allocation ordinance. We have a significant down, a significant underweight to having single-family detached inventory in this city and county. You know, all of those things tell me as a Planning Commission member, that's exact, this is, you know, you can't not, I mean, it's, this is exactly what is being asked for, and we have made the plans for it. And I struggle with the idea of saying, I mean, I get it, but I struggle with the idea of saying, you know, quit creeping out here. In one way, we got people asking us, you know, don't let them do that with their own property. We're not annexing, you know, we're not asking anybody to annex. We're being asked that by the property owner. And so it's not really my, I don't feel like it's my, you know, responsibility to say who asks and who doesn't. That's specifically what I think the state law was trying to avoid. They're trying to avoid us having that say-so. So anyway, I struggle with it. It has all, you know, it checks all the boxes for me, you know, unfortunately for what the folks here that are, you know, in that area or beyond that area. But, you know, I asked a question at the last planning meeting that we had about this, and it was about what the county's going to do to curtail, you know, are they doing anything to stop any development beyond this? And the answer is absolutely not. And so I just, you know, it's hard for me to look at that and say, it's just a terrible idea to have two and a half units per acre on a piece of property with very nice detached family homes for the vast majority on 10,000 square foot lots or bigger. So. Not yet. I'll just make sure everybody's.
I mean, so can I, one last question from my perspective. So after this meeting, which I was not, I was not in attendance, was there any changes to the plan discussed? Whether it would be density issues or assurances with respects to, you know, flooding other, that was, a lot of the comments were respects to flooding other people's property and that sort of thing. Can you kind of?
Yes, sir. So one of the, at the neighborhood meeting, of course, what we heard was similar to what we heard at the public hearing, which was, I think everybody agrees, it's my client's trying to build a nice subdivision, a nice product. Some people just don't feel like it's the right place, feel like that Murfreesboro's invading Rockvale. That is purely an ideological philosophy, and I don't agree with it, but that's not for me to debate. We moved the entrance, our northern entrance away from the entrance to the elementary school. We did that at the, with the coordination of the city traffic department through their coordination with TDOT. And so we did that change. We've also, I sat down with a lady yesterday that lives across Highway 99 to discuss drainage and some of her existing issues and how we can try to help those and certainly not hinder those in the future. And so I walked her through that, you know, if this is approved, we would be doing very detailed calculations with our construction plans, and then I had some general ideas on how to help their situation. It would involve some property owners next door, and so I offered again that, you know, give me a couple of months, and we would sit down and walk through those possible solutions, and I would walk her through all my drainage calculations 100%. So.
So this new entrance that you're speaking of, does that cause the school to have to put another crossing guard at that entrance? Or since it's not an entrance to the school, it's kind of a mute point?
Correct. And I think that was the reason that the traffic department at TDOT wanted us to move it, was to try to eliminate another turn-in movement at the school entrance point and to get that further away. And along with that, we're keeping our same commitments to the turn lanes that we'd already committed to on Highway 99. We did not change any of that.
Matt, while you're up there, I was going to ask this on the next section, but you had presented the county with a list of things to combat the traffic issues around the school, correct?
Yes, sir. So we have, we had engaged a firm called Call Your Engineering. They're, they're based in Brentwood. They have, my client actually drives through some school zones in Williamson County. He had noticed a change over the last few years of significant queue times, similar to what we're seeing on Highway 99, to go into almost zero queue time when he goes through there. And so as this issue continued to be a point of conversation, he called the Williamson County mayor and said, hey, what did y'all change? And so the guy said, hey, you need to call, Call Your Engineering. I wasn't SEC, that's not what I do. And so they come out there, I think they visited the school zone eight or nine times over the period of about a month, and they come up with a list of recommendations. Some of those were on campus, some of those were in the right-of-way. The biggest recommendations for that is to essentially create a new entrance at about that blue line, and then to do a northbound acceleration lane coming out of the north side, the northern entrance of the high school. What those allow you to do, there's two different things that are recommended there. First one is this new elementary entrance. That allows more queuing or stacking on-site. I think we went from about 20 cars stacked deep to, which I think they're double-stacking, so I think you're parking around, say, 40 to 50 cars on-site today. That gets them close to, I think it was about 100 cars they could do on-site. The northbound right-turn lane would allow people to free-flow turn out of that northern entrance as they leave the high school, so that the crossing guard would not have to stop the northbound traffic on Highway 99, which is what they have to do today to let anybody out of the high school. And there were a few other recommendations, such as some standard operating procedures, like making cars stack up deeper on-site before they let them out, instead of having long queue times or just letting out one or two cars. A few of those type things, which cost absolutely nothing. It's just getting the crossing guards to do a little bit different. They're doing a great job, but just doing their job, but just a little bit different some tweaks through there.
So that stuff would need done, whether this development would need, was approved or not?
Yes, sir.
It fixes a lot of the, a lot of the complaints were about traffic. That fixes those issues if, if the county was to do them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to mention, the annexation petition that we're looking at does include the property in question for the development, and it still has the Highway 99, as you see on the map up there. And I think what we're hearing from our city staff is that should we decide to make a motion to approve the annexation and plan of services, we need to specifically exclude the portion of Highway 99. I wasn't sure if we had a new map that we were looking at this meeting versus last meeting, but this is the same map. It includes the Highway 99.
Madam Chair, just to mention, there was not a map, that was a revised map that was included, because what is before you is what was advertised, so.
Was advertised, that's what I mean.
Just the recommendation of staff to modify that to exclude the right-of-way.
Okay. You're right.
I apologize for interrupting.
No, that's, that's, no, exactly right. I just want to make sure all of us up here on the same page, that if anyone is getting ready to make a motion, that I'll just make a comment that I agree with staff that we should exclude the portion of Highway 99 that is shown in the annexation and plan of services. What other questions, comments?
So Matt, I went out and drove, I went out and spent some time and drove. I started at 7:30, and I drove the circle until the school zone ended. I will say that the traffic issues are real. I mean, it ranged anywhere from when I started, which was early, at three or four minutes, to just flow right through the zone, all the way out to 20 minutes, waiting to get through to Murfreesboro. So I see that the, the traffic issues are real. I do believe that one of the things we need to do is when we plan schools, we need to have a lot more foresight to understand a two-lane road is not something that's ideal for that. But I would like to hear a little bit more about some examples in Williamson County. Are there any specific queuing times that was reduced? Or I know you were going to look at a little bit, a few examples of what that relates to, to the situation out there.
Yes, sir. So I don't know if I have a specific, like a pre and a post queue time. I can tell you that my client, and actually two of my clients, they drive to, through two separate school zones where they've instituted this. And I'll tell you, this firm, they started at one school. Williamson County has been taking them from school to school to school basically every year. So I think they've done either five or six over the past about five years. So obviously, they're showing success. You know, I can't get a client to come back if I'm not doing a job right. I'd say they're, they would have the same problem. I can tell you that my client, from a, his own observation, it went from significant queue times, similar to what you're talking about, to just the time to go through with almost no delay, with like no stop. And so obviously, you're slowing down, as you indicated. This is about a mile-long school zone nearly, and so it's going to, at 15 miles an hour, if you're being a good steward of the law, it's going to take you close to four minutes if there's no other interruptions on the road. And so I think our hope would be that that would be four, you know, maybe it'd be six or eight, but it'd be significantly better than it is today with these, with those improvements put in place, obviously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the annexation petition and plan of services?
If it was the pleasure of the Planning Commission to exclude the right-of-way, I think that, and Mr. Hankins or Mr. Ives may, may agree or disagree with this, I think we would like for you to make the motion subject to the plan of services being revised prior to city council to exclude references to that right-of-way being included in the, in the annexation area.
That makes sense, yes.
So moved. Just like you said.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So then the companion zoning item B is a zoning application for approximately 68 acres located along Highway 99, south of Clear Ridge Drive, to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Patterson Company applicant. Ms. Rush?
Trying to find the map. It's about the same one. Yes, thank you very much. So this is the companion zoning agenda item for the, the previous annexation. It is a request for a planned residential development, PRD, to allow up to 182 single-family detached lots. Again, the public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on April 6th, and then we held a neighborhood meeting that I attended on May 2nd. Again, at that neighborhood meeting, the key issues that were brought up was the urbanization of Rockvale, as well as the traffic delays, and then also questions about stormwater. I believe in our last agenda item, we addressed pretty much all of those, but if you do have any questions regarding those, we'd be happy to answer. So with the Riley PRD, it is a combination of different lot sizes. There is a proposal for 32 of the lots to be what we call alley-loaded. Basically, the garages are located in the backs of the houses, and the fronts of the houses face out to the, the street, so that you don't have what they call as like a snout house, basically. So these types of designs are very popular right now, and here's an example of some of the front elevations that they are proposing. These are specific examples of what Patterson Homes have done in other subdivisions in middle Tennessee. So these are the models that would be going into this particular site. Staff was recommending a wider alley. They're proposing 20-foot width. We feel that we are asking for a 22-foot width change to that alley to allow for any of the larger vehicles if they hang over, so that they're not impeding the right-of-way itself. Exceptions that they're asking for are listed in the staff report. Basically, the exceptions requested were for some of the front setbacks, the rear alley to go to 20 feet, and then the minimum lot width on one of the, the unit types from 65 down to 52-foot width. Staff is supportive of those other than for the alley, and staff wants to note that this is, zoning is consistent with the future, future land use map of the comprehensive 2035, and is recommending support of the planned residential development for the following reasons. The PRD is proposed for the large lots, 10,000 to 15,000 square foot are greater than the 10,000 square foot, which is consistent with the suburban residential land use designation. The PRD is proposed for the smaller lot sizes. There's 32. In this case, the PRD increases the usable and attractiveness of the, of the common open space area. And in the future land use comprehensive plan, it does allow for clustering and improved developments to allow for those smaller lot sizes. The single-family residential detached uses and lot sizes are generally consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. There is several that are 15,000 square foot lots, so this is something that would be consistent. And in the city, the city urbanized subdivisions on, along Highway 99 are similar in size as well to the smaller lot sizes. Fourth reason is that this site would participate in the overall Creek Sanitary Sewer Assessment District, and they will be charged $1,000 for each lot in addition to the standardized sewer connection fees for each single-family equivalent unit. So the staff is asking that the Planning Commission discuss the matter and formulate a recommendation to the city council with support of the staff request for the 22-foot width alleyway. That is the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any questions related to the zoning.
And can I just confirm? I was trying to catch that, that the. And can I just confirm? I was trying to catch that, the 22-foot alleyway versus, what did they request?
They're proposing 20 feet.
20. So, you want 22 versus 20?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor, did you have a?
Matt Taylor of SEC. I think we just had a misunderstanding. I thought we were complying with the street specs or subregs. We don't want an exception there. So, I think that we were thinking it was, we were looking for a 22-foot driveway. We're happy to comply with the street specs or whichever book that is, so.
Good afternoon. Originally, their plan book complied with our old street specifications. When we updated the street specifications in January, we increased the width. It's still a 20-foot alley, but instead of 16 feet of pavement, it's 18-foot of pavement with the curbing gutter. So, I think we had asked them to comply with the current street specifications.
Yes.
We're all on the same page?
Yes.
So, I think what's in the book complies with the current street specs, so. Almost looked like what I was, knew what I was doing.
Okay.
Good leadership, Charlie.
Yes, oh, yeah. And I think the only other thing I still, and I just missed this when we were discussing it in the last, hadn't been five minutes ago, I know, but I just think there was so much discussion about the stormwater, the runoff, the concern of the other neighbors and residents. Would you all address that again, please, just regarding this development?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a couple of, really with three different stormwater areas. They will all act probably together, I think, in the end of the day. All of those are either along the north side or along Highway 99. All of that is where our water goes today. It runs off the back toward the north and to the west toward Highway 99. Because we will be discharging to TDOT right-of-way, we'll have to do detention to at least the 50-year storm event. We also know that there, some of our water goes to the north along the roadside ditch of Highway 99 and then some of it wants to kind of go toward 99 but then head south to a culvert rubbouside of a driveway on a neighboring property. And so, I also think that we'll wind up having some injection wells because of some on-site sinkholes that just can't drain out. And so, we will do those detailed calculations for the detention and stormwater with any construction plans. That would obviously be resubmitted to Ms. Noel and City Engineering. We would also have to verify those calculations with TDOT during the process as well.
Can you, I think you just helped everybody understand, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll make sure and for everybody else to say. Let's say you get in, you know, because I think when people hear, we'll do those details later, it creates a little bit of anxiety. But what does the process look like if you go to do those details later after this part of the process happens and, you know, it's just not necessarily working out like what you kind of thought at this stage and you got to build a bigger detention pond or you got to do, you know, whatever that looks like? What happens in the process if that becomes what you find?
We have to start removing lots and, because the stormwater regulations are going to dictate, are going to take precedence over the number of lots I've got in this book. The number of lots in this book are a maximum. We've done some preliminary calculations and we feel really good about these sizes. But we also want to help our neighbors, so if we can do some extra later, we will. But it's never the number of lots takes precedence over the stormwater. It's always the stormwater is going to take precedence over the number of lots. I've had, we've had to take lots out in the past. We'll do it. It's an uncomfortable conversation for me and my client, but that's just part of what we have to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, I think we all kind of know, at least most of us probably in Rome know that this, this ground out there is sensitive to this. I mean, right? So, I just want to make sure we knew, once you get into the details, that there is a process in place that if what you find isn't exactly what you think, changes will have to be made and the TDOT will have to sign off on all that and it won't be comfortable, but that's what happens.
Absolutely.
It's not, we're just going to put the lots out there no matter what and it's going to drain and we're going to put more on somebody else.
That's right.
Just because we said 180 or whatever the number is.
I've got to come back up here next month and the month after and the month after that. Last thing I want is for you to be bringing this project back up in a failed drainage project, so.
Any other questions, comments? Or motions?
I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments and it sounds like we've got the alleyway figured out.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, for those that are in the audience, you may wish to go over the next steps and what they can expect moving forward.
This is going to go to City Council next. There'll be another public hearing at City Council. And with all your comments, questions, like everyone up here knows, we got a lot of emails and calls in the last couple of days even regarding this application. As Rick mentioned earlier, really good comments. So, we appreciate everything that you all have presented to us. We feel 100% everything that you're telling us. But we also feel very good about the application that we just approved as commission, that it's a good application for that property. I would imagine that the land that you all live on, I know the land that I lived on, that our house was built in 1968. I know the land was a farm before it became a subdivision, as is true with almost our entire county. So, this is something we always go through. My guess is that the subdivision that most of you live in, we had a hearing just like this before it was developed and we heard from other neighbors out in the area that didn't want subdivisions coming to Rockvale. And I think y'all are probably very proud of the subdivision that you have as we know and can tell from the emails and all the concerns we've heard. You do still have another step. Two of the City Council members sit here with us today and you can go to the public hearing that they will have and again, express all your concerns. And there'll be more votes. It's not, it's not done yet. This is just a recommendation from the Planning Commission to our City Council. And sometimes they take our recommendations and sometimes they don't, so. Mr. Blomley, anything you need to add to that? How long is it usually before it's going to go to City Council?
You know, I have to get with our legal department because the interlocal agreement is something that, and revising the plan of services to remove the right-of-way, so it may be a little bit longer period of time between now and when it goes to City Council than normal just because of the additional steps that need to be taken. But we will.
But is it always a 15-day notification?
Yeah.
For a public hearing?
Yes, yes. And I believe it's not less than 15 days, not more than 30 days when the notice will be posted in the newspaper. We send the notices out to the same people who received notices in the mail before the, before the Planning Commission public hearing. And obviously, the signs will stay up. We will and will be obviously open for phone calls. Anybody who wants to come in or contact us and check to see when it will be scheduled. Typically, the City Council public hearing, when there's an annexation involved, is about a month and a half after the Planning Commission's action. But like I said, something we'll need to discuss as far as the timing with our legal department and when it would be appropriate to schedule a public hearing here because of the extra steps.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, and thank you to all of you that came out. Appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to item C under Old Business. And this is also another item that we've had a public hearing on and we're going to have more discussion on today. This is a zoning application for approximately 13.7 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive to be rezoned from MU and GDO1 to PUD, CH and GDO1. For the vintage apartments and TDK office and TDK Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green, welcome.
Thank you so much. This third item of Old Business was deferred at the last Planning Commission meeting on May the 5th of this month. At that meeting, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and they considered and opined upon the item. The applicants requested to defer action on their application because they wanted to come back to you with some amendments to the application. As you may recall, it's property that's located south of Medical Center Parkway along Maple Grove Drive and Robert Rose Drive. The property itself is 13.7 acres total. The application is to rezone a portion of that 13-point, that 13-acre parcel to PUD Plan Unit District, and that's the area shaded blue on the map before you. The PUD District allows a combination of residential and commercial uses and that's about 11.3 acres in size. And then the orange rectangle on the square, or rectangle on the screen before you is to be zoned CH. The proposal does have both the properties remaining in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1, GDO1. I'm not going to go through the details of the plan. I suspect that the applicants would like to do that themselves, but I did want to highlight what's different from when you considered it earlier this month and today. Now, just go to this one sheet. Essentially, there are four changes. One was they reduced the apartment count from 274 dwelling units to 232 dwelling units. They increased the size of the TDK office space, which will not be devoted solely to TDK, but they increased it by 10,000 square feet. So, from 50,000 square foot minimum to 60,000 square foot minimum. There were some additional parking spaces added where the apartments were removed. And then the parking exception was further clarified. The way it was in the book before read, it was a little bit more difficult to understand. So, the request has been clarified to say that the only area of parking exception is for the apartments and that's to reduce the required parking for one-bedroom dwelling units from what the zoning ordinance currently requires, which is 1.5 parking spaces per unit to 1.1 parking spaces per unit. I believe there, that ask was to be in line with the Clary Park apartments that they have. So, those are the, I think, the notable changes in the book. There are other smaller changes throughout the book, but none of them changed the substance of the application. Mr. Taylor is here representing the applicants and I'll invite him to the lectern after I answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from Mr. Taylor? Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Margaret Ann. Matt Taylor from SEC. Go through a lot. I did want to highlight the changes. Margaret Ann did a good job hitting the high points, I think. But these areas in blue, we trimmed our residential buildings to eliminate dwelling units in those locations and we added parking back. And then our office building, we changed, increased the square footage from 50,000 before to be a range of 60 to 65. That's just allowing a little elbow room on those top couple of floors. TDK will take about a third of that or a little bit less than a third of that building. So, it'd be about 40,000 square foot, at least, full space left after they moved in there. And then after we removed the units, we cut about 42. We went from 274 down to 232. And then I did a little self-reflection, decided I was not explaining the shared parking agreement very well. And so, we changed our parking calculations to be just the 1.1 for the one-bedroom instead of 1.5. And that is the only exception we're asking for on the parking. For some reference, that's what we did across the street at Clary Park. That seemed to be a little more amenable rather than the shared parking scenario that we had before. So, those outlined the changes. Well, we also added a couple of prohibited uses that Planning Commission had asked us for. Those are outlined on page nine. I think when we came before you previously, we already had gas station and automotive repair and motor vehicle sales and car washes. We added beer and tobacco store, liquor store and convenience store to that list of prohibited uses as well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Architecture, the quality, all those things stayed the same. We merely reduced size of building and replaced with parking.
So, can I ask, so the parking went to 1.1?
Yes, ma'am.
Per bedroom? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And our normal parking would require 1.5 per bedroom?
For the one-bedrooms. The two-bedrooms are already 1.1 and so, we left that, didn't change that at all. We just changed the one-bedroom to match the two-bedroom.
Thank you. Okay, what other questions do you all have? Comments?
This may not be an appropriate question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Go ahead.
Is the developer, will they also develop the front lot on Medical Center Parkway? Or will that be sold to a separate developer? And here's why I'm asking. You use this shared parking term. I think everybody would feel a lot easier if, if, that, if every, if, if this development had the ability to use any parking that was on that front parcel from a sharing perspective. Because there could, it's going to be used at different times as Ross brought up in his presentation. But that just adds to the ability, if that, if that can even work.
So, I think that, I think the anticipation is that that will likely be sold. Obviously, they will get to pick who they'd sell it to. I don't believe that they will build that building. That could change. But I think they will likely sell that building. Now, with that being the case, I think the zoning ordinance by right allows us to have some shared parking agreements between the two sites. And so, I think that if Ross is okay with that, we could work that in where, you know, both parties could park on the other regardless of who owns that. So, right here.
I think that sort of leads to something I wanted to mention. The CH property, of course, is zoned CH Commercial Highway District and Gateway Design Overlay District. So, it's regulated by the zoning ordinance. It's not a part of this Plan Unit District. Mr. Taylor called me and said that he'd like to put restrictive covenants on the CH property to regulate the uses there because this plan development book is for this property. It's not for the adjacent property. And so, when you mentioned a shared parking agreement, that is something that zoning ordinance allows. It's the planning director who approves that, generally speaking. It's something that's done that way. So, I was thinking in my head, how would that work when the plan development would regulate the CH really? And it may be an option that when they do their voluntary restrictive covenants and talk about uses, they may want to talk about reciprocal parking agreements. And that may be a way to do it on the CH property. It's obvious and clear how to do it with the PUD. It's not as clear to me how to do it with the CH.
Hey, Margaret Ann, while you're up there, so I'm clear on this whole 1.1 to 1.5 deal. Is this piece right here, forget about shared parking, but is this, I mean, is it adequately parked or is it, are they, is it an exception? It's still underparked for what we ask?
Sure.
If this was a typical development?
If the apartments are providing less parking than the minimum required in the zoning ordinance. So, generally, it's 1.1 per bedroom for two-bedroom units and above. But for one-bedroom units, it's 1.5 per bedroom. And so, the exception is only for that. Previously, it was, there were some thoughts.
That's what we had last time. I mean, I thought part of what we asked, I thought, I thought it was 1.1 last time.
It was equivalent to 1.1, but the ask wasn't specifically that. It was a shared parking agreement that talked about times and included the commercial.
That's right. Yeah, what we had before was a shared Yeah, what we had before was a shared parking. It purely related to time. And so we added, I think, the neighborhood of about 70 parking spaces, and we cut demand on the residential side with this plan located here.
So no more shared parking agreement?
No shared for this. We're happy to just, we're happy to do, man, maybe a reciprocal parking agreement. Maybe the word that Ms. Green indicated would be better, to just be reciprocal between these two parcels right here. We do that all the time between shopping centers. You know, the Oaks has that, the Avenue has that, even between their out parcels, they have that. Now, some of the, obviously, some of the out parcels at the Avenue are all on one lot of record, but even the ones they've sold still have that ability. And so it's not that either party would rely on the other to meet their required demand. It would be, it's overflow, for lack of a better term.
So the biggest change that took place to allow you to not necessarily be requesting the shared parking was the addition of the 70-something parking spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
But we're still underparked?
We are parked less than what our ordinance would require today, yes, sir.
And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong here. We did the offices arrange between 60 and 65,000 square feet, and I think, Matt, when you ran the parking, you did it based on 65. So we did the parking calculations based on the largest size office building that we would go on the site. So we did a range of 60 to 65, looking at the worst-case scenario on that.
And I know we talked about this some last time. I'm not sure whether, who exactly answered this question, but for example, in your other two vintage apartment complexes out there, or whoever they are now, but the ones you all developed, those were done with similar parking calculations. The 1.1 was used on all, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes, ma'am.
So can we use those as good comparisons and have something to go by on whether this is an outrageous ask of 1.1, or is this a reasonable ask?
The, I'll start with the site to the east. I think we called that Vintage Avenue or Gateway?
Vintage Gateway.
Gateway. And so the one behind Crispy Cream. That one was just a by-right zoning, and so we complied 100% with the ordinance. What they have seen there is a lot of empty parking spaces. They're not fully utilized. The one in front of Embassy, Vintage Avenue, was a PRD. We did ask for an exception there, were granted, and they've never had a parking problem there. And so this site, I don't remember exactly what ratio we used there. I think it was about 1.6 per unit.
Yeah. So Vintage Gateway, it's a little different parking council. I know we're talking on a per-bed basis versus per-unit basis. So on a per-unit basis, Vintage Gateway was about 2.25 spaces per unit, whereas Vintage Avenue was 1.43, I think. So it was much less per unit. It's a little bit tricky when you look at that because it matters when you're looking at your unit mix, when you start looking at that. But both spots, Vintage Avenue has slightly less parking than this deal will have. I think the key is, while we're not comparing the shared parking with the office, it is important, an important element to look at because we feel like when we're at the office, our residents are going to be gone, or a portion of our residents are going to be gone. And so the shared parking between the office and the residential works really well, and we've seen that on other developments that we've done where we've done similar applications. So we feel very good about it. We actually have quite a bit more parking here than what we previously had, and so we just continue to, we've continued to expand it, so.
Did you say the Vintage Gateway has 1.4-something spaces?
I think Vintage Avenue has, I think, around 1.43 spaces per unit.
And we're going to be a mixture of 1.1 to 1.5?
No, that's on a per-bedroom, that's on a per-bed basis.
So we've got 641 non-handicap spaces proposed for this property. And so if you just take out what's required at the office, 217, and then the 58 that are required for the commercial center, and divide that by their 232, we're at about 1.58. So it's a very, it's got a little bit more parking in Vintage Avenue, which we, on a per-unit basis. And we've seen there that we've not had a parking issue.
We also have more one-bedrooms going into this development than we had on the Vintage Avenue deal down the street. So unit mix makes a difference. So we're very comfortable with this from my owner's standpoint.
Yeah, I'd say if the planning commission's comfortable with the parking, we ought to look at changing the ordinance. Instead of getting an exception every time somebody asks for it, comfortable enough to change it, we ought to just change it.
Yeah.
So that's something for a different day, but.
If I can, counsel.
It's not if it's by MTSU or not. Depends on if it's over, I mean, it's the MTSU mix that changes it a lot.
Yeah. And I think that's, I think I mentioned that maybe even at the public hearing, was I think that our standard is, because we've got such a heavy, you know, student body, so rightfully so, we would develop our standard for that. And that's why I think as we've gotten away from the university, and we've had some, we've requested some exceptions in those. And I think that's why we're seeing that it's not an issue in some of those cases.
You know, I mean, we don't change the gateway or, you know, the overlay at the gateway that allows more of other stuff. We could change it in the gateway. It's not going to be close to the university.
Hey, Ross, can I ask you a question? I've had a couple of people ask me if, since this is kind of your corporate headquarters, Icon Property, I've decided, are y'all planning to sell this property? Are you going to keep it under your wing since it's on the same property as your headquarters?
I think our intentions are to keep this one. That's our plan right now. So we've developed five properties, I think, Rick, when I sent you five properties, I think, in Murphy's Row, we've sold two of those. So we still have three. Our intentions would be to keep these. Our ownership structure on those other two were such that we were kind of forced to sell them. We don't intend to have the same structure on this one.
And you're committed to the office building permit first, correct?
That's correct, yep. I think it's important to note that, I want to be really clear on what we're talking about on the office. So today, our office, we're in about 7,500 square feet. What we're talking about for our company is closer to 18,000 square feet, so we're well-over-doubling our office square footage. Between the 60 and 65, we're talking over 40,000 square feet of spec office in addition to our office. So we're expanding our office, and we have overdouble for us, plus we're going to be bringing an additional 40,000 square feet of spec office to the city. And I think that's significant because we don't, that's something I feel like we're lacking in the city, is good-quality Class A office space. And so that, we just increased that even more with this adjustment, where we reduced the amount of residential units and we increased that office square footage, so. We also are going to have, our current space will be vacant, and we own that building, and our intentions are to lease that additional 7,500 square feet that we're in today. So should be, should be quite a bit of office space coming onto the market here.
I was looking through some statistics, and kind of some interesting stuff, talking about the inventory of office space that we have in the city, and it didn't show up as very much. It showed up as a pretty small amount of office space, and, you know, something like 3% or 3.5% or 4% of vacancy rate. You know, after digging in a little bit, for some reason, it doesn't include, like, the State Farm building that is, you know, or the First Bank, or, you know, like Pearl's building. I don't understand where the numbers came from, but, you know.
It may not be for sale or available.
Yeah, it's some.
It's just sitting there.
It's still caused as, you know, still, you know, under some other whatever, but, you know, the idea that we don't have office space here, I think, is a flawed idea. But anyhow, beyond all that, so look, you know, I've said everything that, you know, as far as what the reasons are, I did a little something, and this is all I'm going to say about it, and I'll, you know, let's let this thing move along, however it's going to move along. But, you know, I don't bring up the stuff that I brought up last time for no reason, right? I mean, as far as what these numbers look like and why it's important to me. You know, I went and grabbed the city charter and just kind of, you know, to make sure that everybody here kind of understands. And let me kind of preface, before I get into this, I didn't think asking questions, before I say this, I did learn fairly recently that the applicant may have, has some relationship with the company that I work for. It's on a completely separate area of the company I work for. I have no direct or indirect benefit to that, but just for what that's worth, there is no conflict for me personally, but I think they do have a relationship with the company that I work for on a separate side. But, you know, going through this, you know, the charter, which is what the city says the planning commission does, and what the duties of the planning commission are, you know, there's just a few things that stick out to me. You know, the general purposes, we got to create a master plan, the purposes of this master plan, coordinate adjusted harmonious development of municipality, we all know that kind of stuff. It was kind of interesting to me, you know, it says in here, you know, including, among other things, that we are, that we are, we have an obligation to do, is to have adequate provision for traffic, blah, 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 wise and efficient expenditure of public funds, which is important to us as it relates to how density and these things impact our property taxes, and the adequate provision of public utilities, which is the, obviously, the easiest one to pick on here, is sewer allocation. I think I brought this up, but I want to make sure we're all understanding that the sewer allocation, the numbers that were built in the sewer allocation assumed 11% of the new doors over the next 10 years in this city were going to be multifamily, at a nine-unit-per-acre number. So 11% of the doors at nine units per acre. Y'all remember how the 3.8 and the sevens for townhomes and the nines? So I guess the best way I can say this, when we do something that's 20 or 22 units an acre and just kind of say, well, we don't really, the infrastructure, we know, yeah, 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 that's, but we think it's a good project, you know, that's not, we don't have the authority, I don't believe, to just say, well, we don't care about these things and that we're going to approve it because we think, because I think it's a good project. And so I don't bring those things up because I like it, because I hate this, because I love that, because I like him, don't like her, whatever. I mean, it's because that's what I feel like we're required to do. Okay? And so, you know, these things that are in here, design guidelines, enhance the quality of life in Murfreesboro, I mean, some of these things, you know, they're kind of like, I can see there's some gray area, right? I mean, maintain, enhance the quality of life in Murfreesboro. Well, some people might say, well, hey, this development I think is good for the quality of life in Murfreesboro, and some people might say, well, I think it's not good. Right? I get that. You know, some people might even say, I wouldn't, that we provide clear and equitable set of regulations and expectations for developing land in Murfreesboro. You know, when I was talking about consistency, you know, and how we treat one developer who comes in and asks for something, and we say no, the other one comes and asks for something, we say yes, I'm not so sure, you know, that's all fair and right, but, you know, it is what it is. The numbers are what they are. I don't know how other to say it, other than if we're at 50% of the doors for the next year or two, or whatever, how we can say we've taken into account. I mean, have we even talked about what kind of, has there been a traffic study that we, do we, I mean, that we, have we said that, you know, all 11 intersections around this thing are F-level already, and do we care? I don't know, ma'am. It's nothing personal, and I don't want to make it personal, it's just about this for me. So I'll leave it at that. I don't need any rebuttals or any kind of, you know, you guys pretty well said where you are on it, and that's fine, but I want to make sure I explain what my premise is for my position on this.
I will just say that I want to make sure that everyone up here understands that all I've ever done on this planning commission is do what I thought would be best for the city of Murfreesboro at any given time with any project that has ever been presented. And I can also say that I certainly, I'm sure I have not voted correctly sometimes. I am sure there's some things that I voted on that I thought were great, that, oh, I go back and look at them five years later after they're actually on the ground, and I think, how did I ever vote for that? But, you know, if we're going to say, draw a line in the sand that we have to have 13 or 11 or whatever the number is in the charter for the city of Murfreesboro, if that's, you know, what we're saying, then we got to have that laid out on every agenda we get, on every item that comes before us, and if it falls under the 13 or 11 or whatever, per units per acre, if it does, then we can approve it. If it doesn't, we can't, you know? If that's where we're going, that's.
The charter says we have to have a plan. We do have a plan, and this doesn't fit it. It's pretty straightforward. It is that straightforward. I mean, so I don't know.
I have to say, I don't think any of our plans are just period that straightforward. I think all of them require a lot of deliberation, discussion, and in the end, you know, we just all vote and do the best we can. And we have this, our wonderful city council that gets to decide whether your planning commission is doing what you want it to do, and if it's not, you have the very easy option to change every one of these people sitting up here on this planning commission if we're not the right people and if we're not doing what the plan says we should be doing, so.
Interestingly enough, I think the idea is that, I think that's what a lot of people think, is that it really should just fall back on the city council. But what I think I'm trying to explain is that the way that the charter is laid out is the planning commission.
I'm not saying it should fall back on the city council. We make a recommendation, as we've always done.
Ross, what's the timeframe for this? If it was to get approved, how long until it's fully completed? What's the timeframe on getting started, things like that?
Well, I need to get started on the office very soon because we have rapidly grown as a company, and I have already talked to my architect. As you can imagine, everything today has got long lead times, including design services. And so I have already talked to our design team and asked them to go ahead and put me in a queue with the assumption that, you know, if we get this thing approved, we'll be ready to go. And so we need to get started on the office first and get that done because we've got, as an organization, we need the space. So I would say, you know, if we get this approved by mid to end of summer, you know, we should be under construction within less than 12 months, I hope, of getting it approved.
So total project, all the apartments, when do you think the apartments would be completed?
Completed or started?
Completed.
I would say we would start the apartment sometime around the same time or just after we start the design on the office building. And so I would say it'll probably track four to six months behind the office building, just estimating. These properties are taking a little bit longer today to build than what they traditionally have. Usually, a property this size is somewhere around two years from the time it gets constructed. So, you know, if it takes me a year to design it and two years to build it, you know, we're looking at three years out, so.
Okay. Good enough.
So that was one thing I was going to ask earlier. When you pull a permit, for example, for the office building, how long do you have the permit before you actually have to, have to do something with it? Is it 18 months?
I think if there's no action on it, if there's no action on it within six months, then it would.
Oh, six months?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. What other questions or comments for the applicant or for Ms. Green?
I'll just add that I think that, you know, I'm for this project. I think it's a, I think it's right for the area. I think it's great that they reduced the amount of overall units and increased the amount of overall square footage in the commercial A space, of Class A space. If you talk to the Chamber of Commerce, that's, I mean, I understand what Rick's saying, but that's something they consistently say that we got to have. You know, I hear you where, you know, where there's other parts of it in town, but they don't want to be in other parts of town, they want to be here. And I think that's something that we have to consider, is when those corporations and companies want to move, you know, where are they going to go and where are they going to put their people? And I believe this is a great opportunity for that. That's all I've got to add.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Any other comments or questions?
I'll add just a few. I mean, from my standpoint, I think you guys knew where I was on the last go-around. I think you responded to that very well as far as the office space. Adding the additional parking is definitely a good thing because we were concerned about the parking on it overall, and reducing the number of apartments was another good thing. But I think overall, for me, looking at the whole, what I view as the city needs as a whole from an office space standpoint, I think we're on much better, much better ground than we were before.
I, you know, I said from the get-go that I was for this, and I appreciate the changes that have been made, but I want to make a public comment about Mr. LaLance. I appreciate the fact that the research that you put into it and the time that you put into it, because, Rick, you put a lot of time and effort into this. And I definitely, number one, respect your opinion and appreciate the time and effort that you have put into, especially the comments that you make. I'm still a believer on the valuation on a project basis and this project in and of itself. I think merits us moving forward with it. So unless anybody else has any other comments, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, subject, I guess, to staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
And we have Mr. LaLance and Ms. Abewater. Were you, uh...
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I couldn't hear. So we have five to two, is that correct? Okay. All right. Very good discussion, and thank you all very much, appreciate all that. We will move on to our next item, which is the GDO, and we have one item here, it's Clary Park, Section 1, final plat for 12 lots on 36.2 acres, Zone CH, PUD, GDO 1 and GDO 2, located along Medical Center Parkway, Robbie Corlou Lane, Willow Oak Trail, and Wilkinson Pike. Hans Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This afternoon, we have one item in the gateway portion of our agenda, and it's for you to consider a final plat that creates 12 lots on 36.2 acres. The properties that comprise this are part of the Clary Park, PUD, and CH rezoning efforts last year. The, this final plat, it will only create 12 of the total 20 lots that will be within this subdivision. The properties in the subdivision, as mentioned, are Zone CH, PUD, they're also located in the Gateway Design Overlay District 1 and 2, and those are the two sub-districts in the gateway. They have frontage along Willow Oak Trail, which will be extended as part of this project, frontage along Medical Center Parkway, and Wilkinson Pike. The construction plans show turn lane improvements from Wilkinson Pike into this project, and this final plat will dedicate a new public street, Robbie Corlou Lane, which bisects the parcels that you see here. The planning commission approved a master plan and preliminary plat for these parcels on October 10th, 2021, for those 20 lots. Since that time, the developer has began moving toward construction of those public infrastructure elements, including the road, the streetscape, and Gateway Streetscape master plan elements. It came to staff's attention that some properties were transferred without using or getting a final plat approved, and staff made developer aware that this transfer does need a plat, particularly because there's quite a bit of public infrastructure, public road that needs to be dedicated, so this plat will remedy a lot of that existing non-compliance with the final plat. This does not dedicate the entire portion of Robbie Corlou, there's an additional portion there. The plat does show the easements that we were anticipating for this project, for the multi-use path along Robbie Corlou, and also landscape easements and utility easements along the frontage of the properties. Reagan Smith is the civil for this project, and they've been able to address most of staff comments. One comment that's not yet addressed, but it's my understanding they're working with city planning department, is to coordinate the shared drives and cross-access, particularly along Robbie Corlou Lane. As you know, it is a goal of our department to reduce and maximize the number of entrances or driveways to public street. Where we can encourage or require shared access drives, we do. We have to look closely at the locations of those shared access drives, make sure that they're positives, not negative offsets, and if you need that explained, you'll need to ask Ms. Noel, not me. I usually just look to her and ask, is this positive or negative, and she can answer that question. The driveway locations aren't exactly where I think staff's comfortable. That comment was made with the preliminary plat, master plan, and with the construction plans. Rest assured that we will not sign this plat until we get to a place that we're comfortable with those, but just as far as outstanding comments, I think that's the one with the most significant changes, and it's just coordinating the location of those driveways with the multiple lots that are being proposed, reduce the number of in and outs, and making sure that there's cross-access between the lots so that you don't require a vehicle who may be turned into the wrong lot to go out into the public road just to get to the lot adjacent to it. Other than that, this plat is in relatively good order. Staff asks that you approve it, subject to all staff comments.
So Ms. Green, were these access, are they substantially different than they were in the original plan book that we approved?
Some of those...
Have they just had to shift some?
The plan book, it's a constant struggle with plan developments. On one end, it's not a site plan or a plat or construction drawings. On the other end, we need some details worked out. At that time, basically, the commitment to have shared access drives was there, but we really couldn't pinpoint them until we got more into the construction drawings. And so now what we're looking at, and you can't see on this plat, but there's on-street parking along the north side of Robbie Corlou, so making sure that on-street parking is not negatively impacted with the driveways, with the landscape islands, with the pedestrian crosswalks, looking at the ability of these lots to meet gateway standards with landscape yards on either side, which are required. So it was a thing that we knew we needed to work out at the, at the plan development stage, but it wasn't a time that we were ready to really look at the nitty-gritty of it. And I just zoomed in so you can see when I'm talking about these, where they are.
Any other questions for Ms. Green regarding this final plat? Not, we're ready for a motion. Subject to all staff comments.
Subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we have Plats and Plans. First item is Westlong Commercial East, Lot 7, Site Plan Review of a 6,840-square-foot bank located on 2.9 acres. Zone PUD located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Evansville Teachers Federal Credit Union is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. This next item is the first application of the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda. It's for Lot 7 of the Westlong Commercial East subdivision. As you know, Westlong's a rather large PUD, Plan Unit District development with the majority of the properties located along the western side of Veterans Parkway. A smaller portion of Westlong is located along the eastern side of Veterans Parkway, along Blackman Road. And so today, you're looking at, you have approved, and we'll look at another plat for this subdivision, but you're looking for Lot 7, which will be the Liberty Financial site. There is a Liberty Financial currently on Medical Center Parkway, and this plan, at least the building, is almost identical to that building on Medical Center Parkway. Westlong PUD has been amended through the years, most recently was amended last year to allow a medical facility in this portion of the PUD and to expand financial institutions to be allowed here, so that PUD does allow the use on this property. Just north of this property, on this side of Veterans Parkway, is, is the property owned by Vanderbilt, I think that you've probably heard something about, so this is on the same side of the road, just south of that. The plans that you've approved do show that Blackman Road terminates into a cul-de-sac, it's my terrible cul-de-sac, and then lines up with a signalized intersection, and so these plans are consistent with that as well. Lot 7 is a very large lot, and so it's more than the bank needs, so they'll want to divide that into two lots, and Mr. Aguilera will present that to you in the next agenda item, but I did want to mention it to you if I take you to the plan. You can see that they're showing only a portion of Lot 7. The bank is just under 7,000 square feet, does include a covered canopy along the eastern side. Notably, the Westlong PUD does require that any development meet the Gateway Design Overlay District standards, it does not have to meet the process, but it is held to the same standards as the rest of the GDO. In light of that, the structure itself is a single-story structure, about 27 feet tall, is oriented toward Veterans Parkway, which is a major arterial, and the street with a higher functioning classification. It has, and I'm going to pass the material board around. You can see that it has cast stone base that's in the buff limestone, and then brick and columbus burlington with a black mortar. That black mortar goes with the brick, not the stone. Ephes is utilized above the entrance, and you can see that in the light color with the arched feature, with two colors of drive it, which are buckskin and moonlight, and those are on the board as well. The roof is a prefinished metal roof in dark bronze, and the storefront's anodized aluminum. There is a skylight in the roof, and you may be able to see it on the renderings there. With Gateway Project, the planning commission's to discuss the architectural design, to determine if it's in character and keeping within the GDO standards, and how the building relates to the street and the other, the other future developments that are within Westlong. The, since the building is substantially like the building on Medical Center Parkway, I didn't give very much feedback to the building, since I know that it was opined upon with the original building, and I think if they're doing the same thing, I thought it was probably in pretty good shape if you've approved it before. I guess in the same vein, now that it's built, you can see if you actually like it or not. But, so the building is, like, as I mentioned, it's essentially the same. If you do approve this today, we would ask that you do it, subject to all staff comments. They do have some staff comments that still need to be addressed, but I don't think there are anything that can't be handled prior to permits. I was going to see if I could, I had an image in here of the existing building, but it may be too small for you to see. Yeah, it's too small for you to see. This is actually an image of the formal open space in the existing building. You can see the building beyond, but then they have a seat wall and some bench seating, pedestrian scale lighting, and kind of a half arbor pergola. One of the things that they're still working on with this plan is actually getting the formal open space a little bit more developed and then shown in the plans. What they did on Med Center is nice, and hopefully they'll be wanting to do something similar here. Mr. Matt Taylor is the civil engineer for the site, Mr. Rob Walchin is the landscape architect, and I'm not sure if the architect is here, yep, architect's here, there he is, behind me. Do you all want to add anything to the, to the plan?
No.
Available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions regarding this site plan review?
I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is Westlong Commercial East, Master Plan Amendment for eight lots, Zone PUD located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oscar Properties LLC is the developer. Mr. Aguilera?
Thank you, Chair Jones, and members of the planning commission. As Ms. Green stated, this has been an item that we have discussed previously during the January 19th, 2022, planning commission meeting. The planning commission had reviewed and approved the Westlong Commercial East Preliminary plat, and now when we kind of discuss, you know, the realignment of Blackman Road to ensure that it was going to be compliant with the current street specifications, as well as the dedication of new rideaway, Paul Patel Place, which has now been renamed here to Diversity Boulevard, and the recording of easements. Again, you know, today is another, today's item is a return back to the Westlong East Commercial subdivision for this master plan amendment, for this one to create two commercial lots, as you can see here on the map with Lot 8 and Lot 7, the one that Ms. Green just referenced earlier. Because of the newly created Lot 8, a master plan amendment is required to go before the planning commission, of course, if there's any change or modification to the existing master plan per our subdivision regulations and the GDO process. Preliminary plat was not required for this mittel due to the infrastructure elements already being accounted for and planned for, again, with making sure that Blackman was in compliance with our current street specifications, and so a preliminary plat was not needed for this one. The re-subdivision of the two new lots, again, can be shown here on the master plan, and the renaming of Paul Patel Place to Diversity Boulevard, I wanted to state with that, again, that this has been renamed and will, can be expected to be changed, again, depending on the recording of the final plat, which is the second item that we can discuss in a little bit, with the two items jumbled together. Staff has worked with SEC to ensure that this master plan amendment follows the standards for our subdivision regulations and the GDO process. We wanted to make sure that this was going to be following the master design process for the GDO, and we found that this to be in relatively good order. Staff requests that this master plan amendment be approved, subject to all staff comments. And just again, I believe, discussing with Mr. Blomely, that we can probably vote, probably for the, for the two items together, the master plan and the final plat. We worked with SEC, I'm trying to show you it right now, we worked with SEC to, with this re-sub final plat, to address any comments, and we, again, staff found that to be in relatively good order, and you can see here, again, the two new commercial lots, Lot 8 and Lot 7. I'm here for any questions, and Mr. Matt Taylor is also here as well.
Okay, so this would be looking at our item B and C together? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, there are separate motions on, on each, please.
Oh, so...
They were just so interrelated that...
Right.
There were two separate submittals in our, coming through our process, but they were so interrelated that we lumped them together.
For presentation purpose.
Yes, presentation and comments.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions, comments regarding the master plan amendment or the two lot, the final plat for the two lots, 7 and 8?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve the master plan amendment for the eight lot, Zone PUD, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, again, I'll just read, Westlong Commercial East, re-subdivision of Lot 7, final plat for two lots on 7.2 acres, Zone PUD located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road, Oscar Properties LLC is the developer. And any questions or further comments regarding this particular portion, the final plat for the two lots? the two lots?
If not, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we got everybody in there. All right. Our next item, Item D, is the Arbers at Compton, Section 1, master plan and preliminary plat for 90 lots on 49.8 acres, Zone PRD, located along Compton Road. Middle Tennessee Developers LLC is the developer. Welcome back, Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair Jones. This item that is brought for you all today is the master plan and preliminary plat for the Arbers, Compton, Section 1. The planning commission had last approved the zoning amendment for the PRD program book on December 1, 2021, and showed connections onto the existing sub streets at Bushnell and Lake Edge. After the approval from planning commission, of course, it had gone to city council and was discussed at the first hearing, January 27, 2022. During the first hearing, during that review and discussion, there was a lot of talk about some of the issues that the county residents brought up, and there was a lot of good feedback discussed, and it was determined that the street connections on Bushnell and Lake Edge Drive would not be connected to the existing sub street, and the other connection on Emery Court was to be remained. So on the second and final reading, on February 24, 2022, the public got to see the revised PRD master plan, which you all see here today, and which we will all be discussing and reviewing for the master plan and preliminary plat. For Section 1, there are 90 residential lots and a step field lot that's located here on the northern part of the section. With this, we can see here the street connections for Bushnell and Lake Edge, those are located right here. Wanting to maybe come out from this one, so I can zoom in, so you can all see that. Those street connections have been removed per city council's determination, and they have now been replaced with an enhanced open landscape buffering to provide screening from the adjacent residents. Also denoted in this preliminary plat is the roadway improvements that are to happen on Compton Road, as you can see here with this image, this map showing the new upgraded three-lane travel lane, and there are also the dedicated left turn and right turn lane out of the subdivision, as well as a lane, a separate lane into the development. Staff worked to ensure that Section 1 was consistent with our ordinance and the PRD program book. Staff did request that the mail kiosk that was originally supposed to be included with Section 2 be moved to Section 1 to ensure residents had adequate mail service delivery. So that was the other change that was made, that we requested, again, it be included with Section 1. Also noted, I'll go back to the master plan, also denoted on the plat and the master plan is the depiction of the special interest lots. Those are something that is also consistent with the program book. For most of the elevations for the residential lots, they're, of course, required to have a certain usage of material, brick and stone. The program book has specified that these houses, again, they're marked, there's a little star here, that these are to be used, brick and stone is to be used on all the elevations throughout the home. So again, we have found that to be in compliance with the PRD program book. Staff has found that this master plan and preliminary plat is in good order, and that it be approved, subject to all staff comments. I'm here for any questions, if you have any, and then Mr. Matt Taylor's here as well.
Can you just tell me, where did y'all leave the mail kiosk?
The mail kiosk is in the same location as was specified in the program book. We just told them, we just, you know, requested that they actually include it with Section 1. So it's still in the same location, and it's designated parking, it will be there as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions regarding this item, the Arbers at Compton, Section 1? Master Plan and Preliminary Plat?
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, moving along, we have Item E, which is West Wind Reserve, Section 4, master plan amendment and preliminary plat for 26 lots on 5.3 acres, Zoned RS6, located along Halliday Drive and Drysdale Drive. Cornerstone Development LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie, welcome.
Good afternoon. As you stated, this is the master plan amendment and preliminary plat for Section 4, which is just a continuation of the West Wind Reserve subdivision. West Wind Reserve itself is located off of Armstrong Valley Road. This plan had to be amended, the master plan's being amended due to additional wetlands that were located on the subject property during a detailed survey. The effect that it had on the project is to, if I can scroll down here, create an additional, as you see here, this is the original approved plan, let me zoom out, so it's a little easier to see where it originally connected through this area here. Now, there are two cul-de-sacs, and this was to avoid the wetland area that was discovered. So you've got the original, and then the amended section. If it were not for this change, this plat would qualify for the consent agenda.
Okay.
The plan is generally in good order. We would request that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments, and I'm here with any questions, and I believe Mr. Taylor is still here as well.
Okay.
There's only a reduction in homes, right?
I didn't see a reduction in the number, number of lots between the original Section 4 and the amended Section 4. I did notice that the overall master plan shows a five-lot decrease between the originally submitted version and the amended version. It went from 186 to 181, but I don't believe that that decreases in this section.
Mr. Taylor may be able to elaborate on that.
Yes, sir. Matt Taylor of SEC, I actually think we had a bad number on the original master plan. We lost several lots going through here, for sure. We, I mean, we had them at minimum width to begin with, so I think we probably lost between 15 and 20, Mr. Salas.
You didn't move them anywhere and make up for it somewhere else?
No, I wish I had.
This is a great situation, or a great example of what we were talking about earlier, where you'll have to go in and redo that.
Absolutely. It's, the core is bigger than SEC.
Thank you.
There might be a reason for that.
Okay, any further questions?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item F is Salem Oaks Preliminary Plat for 74 lots on 24.98 acres, Zoned CH and RS8, located along New Salem Highway. Salem Properties, Inc. is the developer. Mr. Barbie.
Hello again. As you stated, this is a preliminary plat for 74 acres, or for 74 lots. The subdivision, as currently designed, will provide new connections to Clear Ridge Subdivision to the south via Collie Lane, will connect down here to Clear Ridge Drive, as well as to Black Powder Lane to the north. I believe that's part of Salem, Salem Landing subdivision to the north. We are, in the review of this plat, we did notice that there are several lots that are impacted by drainage easements, as far as the building envelope. Lots 4, 5, 14, 15, 29, 30, 64, and 65 have building envelopes that will be impacted. As a result, we are going to require that a plot plan is prepared by a registered surveyor and be presented at the time of building permits request, and also a letter from a registered surveyor certifying that there's no encroachment into the easements or setbacks as a part of the final inspection request for the structures on those lots, just to ensure that no encroachment exists, and that those easements and setbacks remain clear. Plan is, again, generally in good order, and we would request that any approval be made, subject to staff comments.
If not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Is that, yes, okay. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item G is Take 5 Car Wash. Modifications to approved building elevations for existing car wash locations, West Clark Boulevard, South Rutherford Boulevard, and Cedar Glades Drive. Boeing U.S. Holdco, Inc. is the developer. Ms. Kerr, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Jones, members of planning commission. On March 16, 2022, planning commission denied proposed rebranding for three Take 5 Car Wash locations in Murfreesboro due to excessively bright vibrant colors being on primary materials and not just the Ted and Terry materials. Says that time, staff has worked with the applicant to revise the proposed rebranding to meet the city zoning ordinance and design guidelines, and now they are only on the Ted and Terry products, which is the Sherwin-Williams Hyper Blue. I'm going to go through each one of these, one at a time, and then there will need to be a motion on each one of them at the conclusion of looking at each of the drawings. Of course, you can see the Mr. B's, original Mr. B's on Clark Boulevard. That one on the left is existing condition. The one on the right is what is being proposed to be done currently. And then, I know that looks like white on the back of that building, it is not white, it is the muted tan color that you see on the existing, they didn't actually change the color on that, it just looks white on this drawing. It will be the darker color. And then the gray outline with the gray roof, rather than the red roof. And then they will have a canopy that will have gray stripes as well as blue stripes on those canopies. This was the plan that was denied at the previous March 16 meeting. So staff recommends the plans be approved as submitted, as they now comply with the City of Murfreesboro zoning ordinance and the design guidelines. Also, the applicant has agreed to not utilize exterior color flashing or blinking lighting to conform with the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance. I'm available, as well as Mr. Wesley Mulligan with Take 5, to answer any questions that you may have.
So the canopies just showed a stripe in them. I think those have already been repainted, though. They're solid blue currently. Those plan on being redone again?
So we originally, we're just going to try to cover up the laminate that was already on there. Of course, the straight edge, it looked terrible, and you could still see the underside through. So then we said, hey, let's paint the whole thing, and we'll come back in with the white stripes afterwards. So now the paint is just curing, and we're waiting for the white stripe vinyl to come in.
And if you don't mind, just go ahead and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Wesley Mulligan, Take 5 Car Wash.
Thank you.
3327 Belfort Court, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Thank you. And so this is just the West Clark location that we're looking at right now, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we at the point for a motion?
Absolutely.
So if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the West Clark Boulevard application, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, South Rutherford?
Okay, and the second location that we're going to look at is the Take 5 Car Wash location at Rutherford Boulevard. This is the proposed, on the left, of course, was the beginning existence, when it was wash and roll, and Take 5, what they are proposing is on the right-hand side. And then, of course, there again, it's just the Ted and Terry product, the metal coping at the top of the building that is now proposed to be painted, and the background, as opposed to being the dark bronze, now to be the middle color gray, and then the roof of the building to be gray instead of the bronze. And then on the canopy on this one, they did request that it be solid gray. We were not opposed to that due to the fact that this actual canopy is not as large as the other ones at the other locations. And then, of course, this was the denied plan from March 16. Again, staff recommends the plans be approved as submitted, as they do comply with the City of Murfreesboro zoning ordinance and the design guidelines. And again, they have agreed and have removed the blue lights that were at this location originally, and that they would not utilize color flashing or blinking lights in order to conform with the City of Murfreesboro zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any questions regarding the South Rutherford Boulevard application?
I'll move that we approve that application, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have Cedar Glades Drive.
Cedar Glades Drive, this one, they kept most of the building exactly as it is. The only thing that they changed is they did put the Ted and Terry, or the Sherwin-Williams Hyper Blue along the Ted and Terry metal coping on the top of the Ephes around the building. Not much of a change on that one, instead of all of the brick and everything being painted, they did change that, they did keep the tower, the tan color that it originally was proposed, and then on the roof, they are going to, the roof will stay tan, and there will be tan and blue stripes on the canopy. And again, that plans from March 16. And then staff recommends that these plans be approved as they do comply with the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance and the design guidelines as it relates to the Gateway District Overlay, and they will not be utilizing any exterior color flashing or blinking lights at this location either.
Okay, any questions?
Make a motion, we approve the Cedar Glades Drive application, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Next, we are moving on to new business. We'll be scheduling public hearings on these items. First item is a zoning application for approximately 1.5 acres, located at 915 Haynes Drive, to be rezoned from RS15 to PRD. Blue Sky Construction is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. My first item of new business is for you to consider a rezoning application submitted by Blue Sky Construction for two parcels located south of Haynes Drive. You can see the two parcels outlined in green on the map on the screen before you. You see, they're just south of Jameson Place, north of Victoria Place, and these properties are Zoned RS15, single-family residential district, with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. There are existing lots that have two homes on them that the plan shows being removed. The surrounding properties for quite a distance are all Zoned RS15, so if I went to the zoning map, you could see that a little bit more clear. All the surrounding properties are Zoned RS15. The applicant is requesting that you consider a PRD Planned Residential District zoning for these two parcels, to allow it to be developed. Together, the properties are 1.45 acres. The plan is showing eight dwelling units. They're single-family detached dwellings. However, they're not traditional lots, as you'll only own the homes and not the land around them. Four of the lots front on Haynes Drive and have rear entry garages, and then four of the homes are along the rear property line and have front entry And then four of the homes are along the rear property line and have front entry garages. The developer has stated that he wishes to implement a New Orleans-inspired architecture and hopes that you can see that in the plan book. The, let me go to the book real quick. There's a concept plan to promise. It's kind of like a schematic of the plan. And then you can see they're proposing a formal open space element in the middle. This plan does propose to utilize garages for its required minimum parking. And those garages will be required to be not used for storage, but can only be utilized for parking. And so that will be, is an exception to our general standards because single-family detached lots are required to provide four parking spaces in the driveway. This property is a little different as it's not a traditional single-family detached, but I did want to make note of that. Another exception is to reduce the minimum building setback line along the rear of the property. The RS15 district would require a 30-foot setback along the rear, and this plan has a 20-foot setback to the buildings. It's also requesting a reduction to the side setbacks. And you can see at the, you may not be able to see, but the smallest distance is the house where I circled. They're proposing to be eight feet from that side property line, and the RS12 has a larger setback. And then, the RS15 zoning district does say that the gross density for RS15 is 2.9 dwelling units per acre. However, this plan with eight units on 1.45 acres is 5.5 dwelling units per acre, so that is an exception to that density. Haynes is identified on the major transportation plan, and it will be improved. It's considered a short-term improvement, and the project code is STI 3, if you wanted to look at the details of that, to upgrade it to a three-lane street section with curbs, gutters, sidewalks. A minimum of 60 feet right-of-way is required to accommodate that three-lane street. We did ask the applicant to touch base with their engineer and surveyor to confirm that 60 feet of right-of-way exists in front of the property. If it doesn't, they'll be required to dedicate any additional right-of-way. We wanted to make sure, since this is a tight site, and the setback from the front property line is 40 feet, that setback will have to be 40 feet no matter where the property line ends up being. And Mr. Burns has confirmed that he checked the survey information and that there are 60 feet of right-of-way. The GIS doesn't measure 60 feet, so that's why Planning Department put him on notice. He said he did look into that. As is consistent with all substandard streets, this property will not construct any improvements to Haynes Drive because there are eight units, but they will be required to pay fees in lieu of construction calculated at the width of the lot or the frontage they have along Haynes. The future land use map recommends that this property develop with a suburban residential character, and we abbreviate that as SR. The Planning Commission should review the project to determine if it's appropriate. The community character classification is different than maybe an urban character because it has larger lots and that it is generally an RS10, RS12, or RS15 lot. So this one is proposing to be cluster development. We did, when the applicant mentioned that he wanted to rezone this RS15 property to this more dense housing style, we asked for them to hold a neighborhood meeting, and they held one at the end of last year. And it was relatively well-attended at the fire station on North Thompson Lane. We have a new face for you to, this afternoon, somebody I don't know, but it sounds like Mr. Roundtree with Hudson Steel has some help now. And so Benny Pandorf, if that's your last name, has a, I keep thinking Benny and the Jets, which is terrible, I know, because he's heard it his whole life, I'm sure. Yeah. But he would like to present the plan to you. We would like, we, Planning, would like for you to schedule a public hearing and would love the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Margaret Ann.
Ms. Pandorf.
So, yes, representing Hudson Steel and Blue Sky Construction, which is Matt Wilson in the front row there. So I'm Benny Pandorf. I do look a little bit like Clyde, maybe a little better-looking version, I don't know. Maybe not. It's up for debate. But, so, the rendering kind of shows just a conceptual image. It shows the open space in the middle. There's planned fire pit, that's where the mail kiosk is going to be as well. And that's the formal open space. Kind of, it's the access to the center of the whole development. There's four distinct home styles. We'll show that in just a little bit. And the summary, as you said, it's 1.45 acres, 5.5 units per acre is the overall density we're going to plan residential development from the RS15 that's existing. The address is 909 and 915. It's actually two lots on Haynes. The minimum house size will be 2,100 square feet for each of the townhomes. So, the property surrounded by RS15 zoning currently, the price point is going to be equal to, or maybe just above, the local value, which would raise the adjacent property values. That's the plan. This is just some existing photos down the street, you know, a couple of different views of adjacent lots, et cetera, down the street. This is the, this is the plan that Margaret Ann just showed you, basically from the pattern book. It shows the eight townhomes. Again, four different styles, which we'll get in right at the end here. There's some sidewalks added off of Haynes. Again, the common, I guess I can draw on this, no, maybe not. The common space in the middle, the open space. Okay, so this starts the, so, again, four different styles. This is house style number one. It's the, that New Orleans architecture style. And it, so basically asphalt single roof, operable shutters, the brick base, square, you know, square posts on several balconies. So this is just a front elevation. Some iron railings for the upstairs balcony. All the garages are two-car garages. And as we said, so the ones, the four units in the front, that front Haynes Drive would be, as was stated earlier, sort of an alley type of garage in the back. And then the four that are in the backside of the property are going to be a front garage all facing, so they all face the center of the property. Talked about the setbacks, 40 feet on the front, 20 feet on the rear, eight feet on, the shortest is eight feet on one of the sides. It is a, as you stated, it's a horizontal property regime style for sale on a rented property. They're all three-bedroom, again, minimum 2,100 square feet. Fiber cement with the brick base, the brick water tables. Moving on to number two. Okay. So, again, the same, very similar. So, house number one and house number two, those are the ones that face Haynes. So, that's why you don't see a garage, it's on the backside. So, again, similar style, all the same materials, asphalt roof, fiber cement siding, the brick base. They are going along with the New Orleans style is the gas, they're actually having gas lamps on the porches, so it's kind of a nice touch. House number three, so now you're seeing, house three and four are on the back of the property, so the garages face. The garages are on the front of the front elevation of the house. So you see it's a decorative garage with some glass doors on it, or some glass features on it. Still the operable shutters, same kind of features, the brick base and the fiber cement And house number four, again, showing the decorative garage, the shutters, and the same kind of siding. As far as the formal space, again, in the landscape plan, we have the shade trees. We have the street trees facing Haynes, of course, as sort of a buffer of sorts. The shade trees scattered about along the interior, which are the larger ones you see on the interior. And then, there's an evergreen. It's like a shrub, it's like a shrub surround.
Can you, is that drawing right there, I mean, is that completely to scale? Is it at least close to scale? It looks like the houses are a little bit farther apart than what it looked like in the picture from the front.
Yeah, this one probably is not as accurate scale-wise, maybe, just, but it's slightly, it's just slightly different. But, yeah, there's 10 feet between the houses. Yeah, if that's what you're asking.
All right.
So, again, the formal open space, mail kiosk, fire pit, kind of a gathering area. And that space, all the open space is maintained by the owner, basically HOA. So that's the end of that presentation. Are there any questions? Any other questions?
Any other questions regarding this application?
Question on the setback, front setback. How does it compare to the other houses on the street?
The regulation of 40 feet is the same, but some of the older houses are back further just because they chose to be set back a little bit further. So if I went to the orthophoto, maybe that would show you the houses. My orthophoto, because it's bigger. So, you can see, they vary some in the older houses that exist. This one's a little bit closer, this one a little bit further away. There's a yellow house, I say it's new, but it's probably at least 10 years old on Haynes Drive. And if you've seen that kind of new yellow house, and it was, I think it's this house here.
It is.
So this is right next to that. Some of the houses go back a little bit, about 60 feet, but 40 feet is the minimum building setback for all those homes. The ones on Jamison Place actually have a berm or buffer, and so they treat that as a rear yard, not a front yard. Even though it has frontage on Haynes, it's technically a rear, and so that would have a 30-foot setback. But it does have the berman buffer.
The house to the left, how far back do you think that is?
This one?
Yeah. Yeah.
I can actually measure if.
You don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to. I'm just thinking it's probably.
It's closer than 40 feet. I know that, I just don't know what it is.
Closer than 40?
Closer than 40.
Okay, so a little setback farther than that.
In case y'all are wondering, Beaumont translates to the world of high society and fashion.
What?
Pretty world. It would be a Brian Hooton project.
It's New Orleans French, yeah.
All right.
There are no questions. I'll make a motion, and we set a public hearing for, I assume, June 1st?
Yes.
June 1st?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. And I guess you're not going far, because you're staying for the next one, too. Mr. Pandorf, we have a zoning application for approximately 0.85 acres located at 1540 Commonwealth Court to be rezoned from RS10 to PCD Georgetown Park parking lot. Skeeter Blue is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you very much. The applicant's trying to agitate me before this presentation. I don't know why.
He wouldn't do that.
Tell me Ford Gators are the best. We have a police officer here, I see him right there. He was a screech. Okay, sorry. We endeavor to provide you all with more and more information, and I think as such means we spend more time scrolling between presentations. Second item under new business is for you to consider a zoning application, which actually, maybe you just don't consider it with that comment, I'm not sure. But it is for a lot located in the Georgetown subdivision. You can see on the yellow color with the RS10 label on it, that property is .85 acres in size. It's within the Georgetown subdivision but adjacent to the Georgetown Park Commercial Center, which has a variety of uses. The property is zoned, single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The adjacent center is a commercial center that is mostly, but not quite all, built out. And the zoning may somewhat skew it, but you can see a building pad here that hasn't been built out. It's adjacent to the Five Cents Restaurant. And so, the applicant, Mr. Baloo, Baloo, maybe, is requesting to add this property to his commercial center. And with the plan, it's a PCD application. Initially, he came to Planning Department, well, I think initially said that he wanted his own at CH, and knowing the community, we suggested a neighborhood meeting first. And as you might have suspected, there was great concern with the adjacent property owners with zoning a residential lot, commercial highway district, for many reasons, including it's not a major arterial end, because there are no way to restrict the uses with a bulk zone of CH. And so at that neighborhood meeting that was held at Five Cents at the end of last year, if the applicant decided to change his request from commercial highway to PCD planned commercial district, so the program book that's been provided to use is a fairly slimmed-down version of a plan development, but essentially the purpose of it is to communicate the intent and to be restricted by the use identified in that program book. And so that PCD zoning would only allow this property to be used for a parking lot, which is the applicant's desire, is to provide additional parking. He says the primary use of that parking, the additional 66 spaces, will be for employees. However, zoning and planning will not regulate who parks there, but certainly he can manage his parking lot. Another significant concern was the fact that commercial, we did not want to introduce commercial property through the Georgetown subdivision with the frontage on Commonwealth Court. So this plan development does restrict any type of vehicle access from Commonwealth Court. If you look at the plan, you will see that there's a multi-use path that connects Commonwealth to the center, because as it currently exists, there are people who live within the Georgetown subdivision who go to shop or eat at those spaces but don't drive their car. They might walk or bicycle or some other way of getting there. So he wanted to provide that cross-connection, but we certainly didn't want to introduce that commercial traffic. So the plan will show like a multi-use path just through the property from Commonwealth to the property, but no place for cars. And the design meets the, will be, will meet the TDOT minimum standard for multi-use paths and propose some bollards near Commonwealth Court to help keep the cars from going on that path. Like I mentioned, there was a neighborhood meeting, it did have quite, quite the attendance. The applicant is requiring to provide that minimum required buffer that you would see between a commercial use and a adjacent single-family residential. And so I included an excerpt from the zoning ordinance that shows the type of buffer that would be there. And so that's a type D buffer, and it continues for all the single-family lots. They've committed, in addition to the type D buffer, adding an additional layer of evergreen shrubs. And shrubs, particularly evergreen shrubs, are helpful with car headlights shining into adjacent properties, so having the layer of heightened materials is helpful. This application, as you might have guessed, is not consistent with the future land use map, because this is a residential lot, and it was anticipated to be a part of that suburban residential pattern that's already established. And so it's not consistent with the future land use map because of that. However, the future land use map does provide some transition policies where you can, it may make sense to do something different. And so it's up to the Planning Commission to consider these, to see if any of them fit. I did list all those. I did list all those bullet points from our proposed amendments to the future land use map for your consideration, but I think that a couple that may be applicable is that, excuse me, more than one property has been consolidated into a proposed land development. And so the fact that this is not going to be developed as its own standalone commercial lot, but will be integrated into the adjacent property may warrant deviating from that future land use map. And then current land development patterns support the expansion or contraction of a specific land use boundary. And so those are a couple of the reasons that you may, that we've identified that you may want to do something different, that showed in the future land use map. Benny has a presentation, if you have no questions from me.
Okay, any questions before we see the presentation?
I'm going to start the slideshow for him, so it'll show up where we can see it. There you go.
Thank you. So as she mentioned, so it's 0.85 acre lot, it's at the, basically the end of the cul-de-sac of Commonwealth Court. The address is 1540 Commonwealth Court. So this just kind of shows the general content. As she said, the owner wants to expand, again primarily for employees and the retail tenants. But because it just needs more parking available for, for the, to supplement the existing parking lot that he already has. The neighbors do currently use it for a path, as she said, so that, and that was, I think, one of the items that came up. And so he's graciously agreed to provide a multipurpose path across it, so that they can get to the Kroger and to those retail spaces just directly from the neighborhood. And as she mentioned, it was, it's a, it's currently RS10 zone, so it's, so the rezoning is for, for a PCD. So one of the issues has been, there is a stormwater drain that's on the corner of the site, but it is on the site. And the owner has, is in complete agreement that it needs to be upgraded to the city of Murfreesboro standards, and is willing to go above and beyond. So that's something that's going to be worked out in the construction documents. It's not completely determined at this time, but the commitment is to improve it. Because he doesn't want any drainage issues on his site, so he's very committed to that. Again, just some photos of the general area now. The photo B at the bottom corner there is just a, is what the site looks like now. Just a few trees and basically it's a grass site. That's just adjacent parking lot and spaces that this lot is intended to supplement. That, again, is just the site plan, so it is 66 additional parking spaces, which is really the main intent of the project. Oops. Landscaping, as Margaret Ann said, it's a type D buffer that will buffer between his project and the adjacent residences, so. And the scattering of trees at the islands of the parking, the parking lot itself. There'll be decorative and security lighting that will meet all the requirements as far as for cutoff. And of course, the double, the type D buffer, as Margaret Ann mentioned, is going to help with headlights passing through to the residences, so it'll mitigate that. And that's, that's pretty much the presentation.
So what's the width of the quote-unquote "multi-use" path? And where I'm going with that, is most of these people come here via golf cart. Is, can two golf carts pass through this multi-use path going at the same time?
No, it's, you could.
Margaret Ann, six foot?
Six or eight, yeah.
I think that they, he wants smaller than six feet, but we said it had to be wider. I believe eight feet is TDOT minimum. I thought it was 10, but I think Michelle told me it was eight foot minimum. And what we are careful to do in this program book is to not call it a golf cart path. Isn't, to not say it's for golf carts, because Mr. Blomley did some research. And golf carts are not legal to drive on public roads, so we don't want, as a planning department, to look like we are creating a situation. If people choose to use golf carts or not, that's to them, but if it's a multi-use path, we feel comfortable with that. So even though our police department do drive golf carts, they're exempt in the state of Tennessee and can drive those on public roads, whereas citizens are allowed to. So we're careful not to call them golf cart, call it a golf cart path. It's eight feet, and I know that Skeeter wanted to do smaller, but we want it to meet that TDOT minimum. If you're going to design it as a multi-use path, it needs to meet those minimum standards as a multi-use path.
So everything in the book that refers to a golf cart path will be changed to show a multi-modal path?
Benny should have already done that if he hadn't.
Yeah, if there was, I think there was some original versions of the book that had golf cart path, but it's, it all should say multi-use now, so, yeah.
Okay. I believe I saw a golf cart somewhere. And this may be a Ms. Green question, but in the, the plan, the landscaping that's required to be put in, does that, will it have to be irrigated?
Required buffer yards are required to be irrigated so they survive and perpetually maintained. So because it's a zoning requirement, if it dies, it will be required to be replaced in the future. Whereas you don't always see that with just like commercial landscaping in the parking lot. Sometimes you see it die or, and just stay that way. It's because we don't really have the same mechanism that we have with the zoning, where it's required to be perpetually maintained. So irrigated, yes, but also there are other reasons vegetation could die. They would be held to this and would be in violation of their zoning if they didn't replace the material.
And it won't be irrigated?
With an automatic underground irrigation system, not with a hose.
And Madam Chair, I see, I see the.
Did you find it?
Yeah, it's on the site index page. It looks like that label has not been updated. Mr. Pandorf, on, on that site index page, it still says golf cart path.
Oh, that's where you saw, yeah. We'll make sure we fix that. Okay.
I mean, overall, I think it looks good. I used to rent a space adjoining this little parcel we're talking about, rented from Mr. Blue. I think it's a beautiful, you know, complex that he has there. I think this will be a nice added improvement. I will say that if the landscaping is required, is there a timeline within which the landscaping has to be installed?
I'll have it before anybody boxes that, I'll tell you that. I don't know what the ordinance is, but before anybody goes in there, the trees will be planted, the bushes, the islands, everything will be completed.
It would be required to be installed with the parking lot. So if he doesn't construct the parking lot for several years, it won't be required until the construction begins. With parking lot addition, we don't require building permits, as you typically have, where you can withhold certificate of occupancies. With these, we require them to get maybe a cost of construction site work permit. There will be an electrical permit required as well for the lighting. But so with this, we would not finish out the permit until the landscaping was installed. There are some times where bonding is allowed, and I don't know if Mr. Blomley knows when that would come into play. Instead of installing landscaping in the summer, sometimes you allow them to wait to install it. Would that be an option here, or would they have to?
I think that's typically with like the recording of a plat. I don't know that I have an answer as far as a private side improvement.
There will be a plat required for this as well, to combine that lot with this. So I don't know if that would be something, a tool that you'd be interested in using, but we can explore it maybe before the public hearing, whenever that may be.
Yeah, just questions that might come up during the public hearing. Any other questions or comments regarding this application? If not, we need scheduled public hearing.
Make a motion scheduled June 1st.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, June 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next item is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 16.3 acres located along Emery Road. The Ann Watkins family, Emery Road Trust, and the Samuel Watkins family, Emery Road Trust are the applicant. Ms. Smith, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commission. This particular item, it has a kind of a two-pronged, this is the first portion, an annexation, which actually has a concurrent submittal for a vote zoning for it. Let me scroll down here. It does contain, there we go, two existing parcels that are surrounded on all sides by city limits. This portion is the only portion that does not have city limits, as well as a small segment down at the bottom. The larger of the parcels is 11 acres, the bottom is 5.8 acres. The 5.8 acres has an existing house and farmstead with ancillary buildings on it. This particular annexation request will not look at any right-of-way annexation in the Emery Road configuration. As we have looked at some draft layouts, they can access between Sandstone Circle and Laurel Stone Drive as the project moves forward, if it is accepted for annexation. These particular areas, when we're looking at the city of Murfreesboro urban growth boundary, it is contained within that. As well as, as the planning commission has started to look at the proposed future land use map, it's also within that urban infill service line that we anticipate being in place. With that, this existing access is currently coming down Emery Road, about 1,300 feet. So as we do look at the plan of services for this particular project, we're making sure to see how those services can be provided to the rear of the property for fire and so forth, as it is on septic and well water currently. With that, I would like to go ahead and request that we set a public hearing for June the 1st on this particular project. And as I will go in more detail on the next item, as far as the zoning being requested as well.
Okay, any questions regarding this annexation petition and plan of services? And we will have the companion zoning next. And if not.
Motion, we schedule a public hearing for the annexation petition and plan of services for June 1st.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now the zoning application for approximately 16.3 acres located along Emery Road to be zoned RS10 simultaneous with annexation. Jeremy Taper is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
So as I mentioned, this is the companion piece. So you'll notice, because this is a zoning request, we wanted to share with the planning commission what the current land use map shows for this particular piece. It shows a suburban residential designation for it. And the proposed land use map that has not been adopted yet, but we are looking at it for best available information, also shows it within that area, this hard dash line, it represents the urban service infill line. And so the property you can see is well within that particular component. They are looking at a concurrent change of zone to an RS10. As you'll see here in the SR district, actually RS15, RS12, and RS10 are considered compatible zoning districts for that particular piece. And as I mentioned before, we are looking at, there is potential stub-ins and connectivity opportunities here at Sandstone Circle and Laurel Stone Drive in the adjacent areas. And again, we are not looking at annexing Emery Road. City Limits does stop just to the north of this. And the future transportation plan does show some improvements of connectivity back to Les Casas. So we do not feel that we need to include Emery Road as a connection point here, given the existing condition of the roadway. And with that, I would like to mention that next week, Tuesday, we are having a neighborhood meeting on this particular project. So we'll be hearing from the neighbors what they think about the project. And we will bring that back to you at the public hearing, along with the plan of services, which I forgot to mention on the last item, as well as the zoning requests. So with that, we would like to set the public hearing for June the 1st as well.
Okay, any questions?
Can I ask a quick question? The Pebble Creek lane, just right to the north of that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that city? Is that in the city?
It is. You didn't realize what we'd annexed.
It's, it's right at the corner of Emery and Osborne. It's a, and the, and what's directly to the west of the shaded property is the most recent section of Pebble Creek, that where it's the Sandstone Circle. There's a, there's a little church right on the corner of Osborne and Emery, and Pebble Creek kind of wraps around that church.
Got it, alright.
I just want to know where the neighborhood meeting is being held?
The neighborhood meeting on this one, I believe, is at Exit Realty on Memorial?
Yes, the Exit Realty office.
At 5:30 PM.
I'll make a motion, we set the public hearing for June 1st.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 11.4 acres located along Les Casas Pike and East Pitts Lane. Betty Taylor, Elizabeth Taylor, and Terri Taylor are the applicants. Ms. Smith?
Thank you again, Commission. This one again has the companion annexation as well as a bulk rezone. Staff would like to start out stating on this particular project, we are not able to support the annexation or zoning request for the three reasons shown on the screen, which include currently our existing general plan, as well as even our proposed potential future land use plan. Both show these pieces as being a suburban estate zone district. Secondly, annexations beyond any infill service line that we're anticipating that has been the direction that council wants us to see would actually take away from providing services to the westerly side of Les Casas to complete the remaining infill areas in those areas. And staff feels that they should fill in before the service infill line, before considering annexing beyond that line. And then lastly, Les Casas Pike is currently experiencing high-peak hour traffic volumes. I believe it's level of service D for our average daily traffic currently, and is anticipated to go to F. The improvements that are scheduled in our MTP transportation plan for 2040 do not show it going from a two-lane to a five-lane anytime in the near future. And therefore, we should not exacerbate that by having a higher density or higher development rate within that area. As you can see on this particular map, Les Casas Pike is here. This is actually just adjacent to where we were, just the other side. City Limits actually stops on the Les Casas Pike. And this particular piece, for about a two-mile stretch, has no development within the city limits. This one just happens to show it a little bit easier. The dark black line on this potential land use map shows the existing city limits. So you can see it's kind of pulled way back. And then the potential future one breaks all the way down Les Casas. This is about a two-mile stretch. So we do feel that any kind of annexation across that line could also potentially encourage other people to propose annexations on the other side of the roadway, which currently we're already having difficulties with. And really, lastly, I'll talk about it in the zoning section, but having a request for a bulk zoning to CF, especially in a location that is beyond really where we anticipate our city limits to be, we feel is usually not supported as well. So going into. So going into those specifics, though, the applicant has been made aware of staff's position. However, they have wanted to continue to pursue the annexation and the zoning for this subject properties. And so if you would like to discuss the project further this afternoon before setting a public hearing, you understand where staff is based on the best available information we have at this point. And I believe the applicant engineer is here on this particular property.
Do you all have any questions on this item that we need to discuss before setting a public hearing? We obviously have some pretty strong reasons listed that staff is not supporting this, so we, any discussion before we set a public hearing?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for June 1st.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
abstain.
Motion passes with one abstention. Next, we have the zoning application for that same item. It's zoning application for approximately 11.4 acres located along Les Casses Pike and East Pitts Lane to be zoned CF simultaneous with annexation. The Murfreesboro Medical Clinic is the applicant.
So this is the companion zoning request simultaneous with the annexation. As staff mentioned previously, staff is not able to support the annexations for the four reasons that we discussed in the prior item. Three of those items are actually listed in the staff report. A fourth one that we forgot to add, I mentioned, is that we generally, in a greenfield site such as this, we would not support a speculative bulk zoning requirement. As I mentioned, it's a pretty good size acreage. I believe it's 11.4 acres, and so there's no guarantee what a CF zoning can be, even if concept plans are provided. Once that bulk zoning is put in place, we don't really have any idea what may go on. And as you can see in the aerial map here, surrounding, you have a small church that's in the county area. Everything on the easterly half of Les Casses is all in the county. There is some commercial development, a gas station and a Dollar General to the north of the site, and then really very large lot residential estates. As I mentioned earlier, our general plan, current general plan actually shows this as suburban estate. Suburban estate actually has very, very low densities at 1 to .35 units to the acre, so meaning you would normally see three-acre lots, definitely no more than one acre in size for one house. So we believe that that is, flies in the face of our current general plan land use map, as well as just taking a look at for best available information, our proposed land use map, should it continue in that direction. Everything shown in green is really considered a futures service area, which we potentially could annex outside those areas, but we really would need to take a hard look into the provision of services throughout that particular area. Again, on this particular application, the applicant's been advised of staff's position and has chosen to still pursue annexation and zoning on the subject properties. So staff is looking at setting the matter for public hearing discussion on June 4th concurrently with the annexation request.
June 1st.
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this before we set it?
I've got one. Is there a reason, Mr. Harney, Mr. Taylor, is there a reason why we didn't look at a PUD instead of bulk zoning?
Matt Taylor of SEC. Really, we didn't discuss it with staff. You know, I think we were probably open to a PUD. I mean, we obviously prefer the bulk zoning because, as Ms. Smith said, it is more property than we need, but it is the size of the property. And so the clinic would not take the whole 11 acres. There would be some out parcels there. And so there's a certain element of that that we probably can't nail down for you. But we know our user, the main user and the main driver of the project. And so we just didn't have any direction from staff until the staff report came out that it should have been a PUD, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And how many acres, Mr. Taylor, was the main user looking at using?
The clinic, Murfreesboro Medical Clinic was located facility here, similar to what they've got under construction currently on Shores Road off of Veterans Parkway, as well as they previously constructed off 231. I think it's roughly a four to five acre site approximately. I don't have my concept with me, but I think we laid out about three or four out parcels that were about between acre, acre and a half a piece, and then the remainder would be dedicated for the clinic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are any or not any other questions, I move for, to set the public hearing for June 1st.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you, Commission.
Abstention. Next item is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding amendments to Section 2, Chart 1 and Chart 4 pertaining to uses permitted. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
This is the last item in this portion of the agenda requesting an item to be set for a public hearing. And this is a zoning amendment that the City Planning Department is proposing to use as listed in Chart 1, as well as one amendment to Chart 4, which is our off-street parking and queuing spaces section. The complete list was included in the attachments, so I don't want to go through each and every one of them, but, and those were identified by red X or S as new additions. The X is permitted by right, and an S denotes that it would be allowed by special use permit if approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The areas that are kind of like in the golden rod or orangish color are the sections that we're proposing to delete, and, and some of them were combined with other sections. So it's a use that's very consistent and compatible with another header, and so we felt that we could just combine them rather than have specific lines on some of them. So for some of the key ones, medical dental office or clinic is something that we get often, and it's not a use that's listed in our chart. We've been using office space as when we're trying to count the amount of area in terms of parking, but from a use itself, that's where we've always classified it. So because we've had many of these types of requests, we've decided it would be better if we could break that out and just identify which zoning districts that that particular use could go into. Similar with payday loan, title loan, check cashing services, we've had those. We've been assigning those under financial services, and financial services is probably more appropriate for when you're looking at brokerage services or those types of smaller office types of uses, where this is more of a heavy commercial. Financial services is something that's allowed in our commercial fringe, our neighboring commercial districts, whereas payday loans tend to be something more, like I said, heavy commercial and more appropriate in the CH and the industrial zoning districts. So we're, we're suggesting to create that new land use and identify those, those districts that would be located in. Plasma Donation Center was another one that, we do have one in the city, and that is a use that is probably more conducive to a heavy commercial or industrial areas. Existing uses where we've made some small changes, a hospital is currently permitted in our industrial zone and our medical zones, but not in our CH zone, and it's something that is very compatible with our commercial highway zone. So we're proposing to add that to what's already allowed. Farming, which we don't have a whole lot in the city, is allowed in some districts, but not in other districts. So, because farming, sometimes when, you know, people have their property annexed, and it's a while before it gets developed, they may continue farming, even though the annexation and zoning's moved forward, so we're suggesting that that would be allowed as a permitted use in all districts. And then campgrounds and travel trailers, believe it or not, are permitted by right in our CH zoning district and several of our other districts. And so the Planning Department is recommending that those remain as uses, but identified as those requiring a special use permit, so that each property can be looked at on its own face and manner, to see if it's something that would be consistent or compatible in that neighborhood, rather than permitted by right. And then uses that we're suggesting for deletion are fish hatcheries out of the CH zone, petroleum refining, contractor storage yards, and wrecker towing. Go from the CH and CBD districts out of those areas, but yet still remain in the industrial districts. And then there's a list of miscellaneous businesses that are identified that can actually fit into other areas like apothecary. Those can go with the pharmacies that we have already listed. So with that general summary, staff is asking that this zoning amendment be scheduled for a June 1st public hearing. Happy to answer any questions about how we do this and what our day-to-day business is in the Planning Department and the Chart 1. Thank you.
Okay. I wonder if we need to make sure we're going to have a quorum on June 1st. It is a popular time on vacation, but surely we'll have-
If you want, I can go ahead and send my email right now. You'll all have to respond before the vote, so.
Oh, man. Any questions before we schedule a public hearing on this item?
If not, I move that we set a public hearing for June the 1st.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rush. Next, we are moving on to staff reports and other business. First thing we have is a mandatory referral to consider the dedication of MTE electric easement at the General Bragg Trailhead along West College Street. The City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is the applicant. Mr. Ives.
Matthew, if you can bring that up for us.
I'm going to have to tell the cable department.
Cable department?
Got it pulled up on my screen, if they can.
Oh, I can control. That's dangerous.
It is the, yeah, there we go.
Okay, here's the overhead. There's currently-
Oh, we've got it. I've got it on mine, and it's, it's rotated. There we go.
Okay, that, yes, that's better to look at. There is a, an electric line running along the railroad track on the Bragg Trailhead side currently. MED, MED, Middle Tennessee Electric wants to add a new pole and some down guys. What they discovered is that there's no, or at least nobody has been able to find a written easement. The line's been there for years, and so it's clear they have an easement, but there apparently is nothing in writing. They've asked us to give them a written easement for covering the new area that they're going to be working in. So we recommend approval of that to go to Middle Tennessee Electric.
Okay. Any questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And Item B is a mandatory referral to consider the acquisition of right-of-way and temporary construction easements for Chafin Place Road improvements. City of Murfreesboro Legal Department is the applicant. Mr. Ives.
Our engineering department is planning on an improvement to the Chafin Lane-Thompson Lane intersection that will have the traffic on Chafin coming off of Chafin Lane essentially mirror the traffic coming off Thompson Lane. In order to, and it's, this will give us two dedicated left-turn lanes off of Cherry Lane, one straight-through lane dedicated and a right, a dedicated right-turn lane. So, and actually, the right turn can be dedicated right or street-through too. So I'll have two through lanes, one of which may have a right, right turners waiting, but two left-turn lanes. It'll get, move traffic out of that area, I think, more, much more quicker, quickly and efficiently. In order to do that, we need a, a small amount of right-of-way and a construction easement off of the convenience store service station that's on the, on the right-hand side of Chafin Lane as you're coming out. And then we also need only a temporary easement, temporary construction easement on the Kentucky Fried Chicken Lot that's on the left-hand side coming out. So we ask your approval to get those easements, so we can go move forward with the road improvements.
Okay. Any questions?
For approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else.
You have nothing else. Do we have anybody else that has any other business this afternoon? All right. We stand adjourned.